Good morning, present.
Member Petty? Member Johnson?
Good morning, present.
Member Tuck?
Yes, sir, present.
Member York?
Good morning and present.
Thank you all. We do have a quorum, so I'd like to proceed to today's agenda. As you know, as the public knows, there are two rules on today's agenda, having to do with attendance in one rule and scholarships in a second rule. I wanted to just alert those calling in, particularly those who may be interested in speaking today, that we are not considering a rule regarding a mask mandate or the wearing of masks specifically in schools. The Department of Health has worked on such a rule. That's not this meeting. So please keep that in mind. We will be limiting public comments to one minute per participant, and please be sure that your comments are directed to the rules that we are about to consider. So with that, I'd like to turn over the meeting at this point to Matt Mears, our general counsel, to explain the substance of the first rule that we're going to consider having to do with attendance.
Thank you, Chair Grady, and good morning, members of the State Board. This is an emergency meeting in response to Governor DeSantis's executive order 21-175 that was issued on July 30th. The order directed the Department of Education and the Department of Health to work together on rules as well as any additional agency action to ensure safety protocols are provided for schools to control the spread of COVID-19. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Department of Health for their collaboration. Since the governor issued his order, we've had the wonderful opportunity of working together with them, and appreciate the entire team there on behalf of the department. Thank you. The health safety protocols fall under, as Chair Grady mentioned, the Department of Health. In keeping with that authority, today, the Department of Health adopted emergency rule 64 DER21-12. The title of that rule is "Protocols for Controlling COVID-19 in School Settings." That order has been issued. Because the Department of Education's jurisdiction is over education, the rules before you today are limited to educational issues related to COVID-19, as Chair Grady mentioned, one on attendance and another on scholarships. The department's emergency rules, I just want to, for the record, explain the difference between a regular rule and an emergency rule. In keeping with the governor's executive order, the Department of Education was directed to execute rules that do not violate the constitutional freedoms of Floridians, parents, and children, do not violate parents' rights under Florida law to make health care and educational decisions for their minor children, and rules that protect children with disabilities or health conditions who would be harmed by certain protocols such as a face mask mandate. Emergency rules are different from the rules that the State Board typically adopts. They must be adopted only when there's immediate danger to the public health, safety, or welfare that requires emergency action. Here, given that schools start in a few days in some districts, there's clearly an urgency here. There's not sufficient time to proceed through traditional rulemaking. So the emergency rulemaking process allows these rules to be in place in order to serve and promote the safety of students in the school, public school system. Emergency rules must be narrowly drawn, and they take effect immediately. So, members of the State Board, if you approve these rules today, they will be filed today and will be effective today. Now, turning specifically to the attendance rule, the first emergency rule, board members, for your consideration, is 6A ER21-01. The title is "Pupil Attendance Records for COVID-19." The department's statutory authority for this rule is found in Section 1,003.23. This emergency rule modifies the department's existing rule on attendance, found at Rule 6A-1.044 Florida Administrative Code. Normally, a student must be physically present at the school in order to get credit for attendance. But the statutes allow a student who is away from school while the student is engaged in educational activity outside the school facility when that activity is part of the school's approved instructional program for student education. The emergency rule will benefit students and school districts because it allows students to continue their education when, on account of an exposure to COVID, they are quarantining. So even though they won't be physically present, under this rule, they'll be able to continue their education and get credit for those days of school outside of the physical school building. To do this, school districts must have procedures in place to continue the student's education while at home. The student must have access to class assignment, class materials, and instructors to assist the student with those class assignments. The aim is to avoid learning loss for any students who are temporarily quarantined so that the students will not be disadvantaged or will not have learning loss. The rule sets out the reasons for the emergency, which we've discussed, with schools starting in a few days, the need to protect students' health and safety and to ensure they don't have learning loss. And so that's been established. But, board members, for you to know, you're not just adopting the text of the rule, you're also adopting the justification for the emergency procedures today. And that's set out in the rule. Once you approve it, it will be published in the Florida Administrative Record and will be immediately effective. Chair Grady, that concludes my presentation on 6A ER21-01, "Pupil Attendance Records for COVID-19."
Thank you, Mr. Mears. Can I get a motion to approve emergency rule 6A ER21-01 and notice?
No move.
Second?
A second. Second.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, members, I'd like to proceed to public comment before we take questions from the board. So with that, for 15 minutes, we will take public comment on this emergency rule 6A ER21-01 regarding pupil attendance records for COVID-19. And as I mentioned earlier, each caller will be limited to one minute. The operator will be able to monitor the calls to be sure the calls are limited to one minute. And please keep your comments to the rule. Again, the rule has to do with pupil attendance records. It doesn't have to do with masks or mask requirements or anything of that sort. I would say 100% of the emails I have received on this subject or on this meeting have to do with masks. And again, that's not the subject of the rule. So that's not what we would appreciate your comments on. We'd like comments on that rule. So, operator, is there anyone from the public who would like to address the board about the emergency rule strictly limiting it to pupil attendance records for COVID-19?
Thank you. If you would like to make a public comment, please signal by pressing star 1 on your telephone keypad now. If you're using a speakerphone, please make sure your mute function is turned off to allow your signal to reach our equipment. We ask you to limit your comments to one minute and state your name when posing your comments. And as a reminder, that's star 1. Our first comment comes from Rebecca Sarwi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Sarwi. I live in Belushi County. I have two children in public school. My concern with the attendance is about the quarantining this year. I'm really hoping that the quarantining wouldn't happen at all. What I was hearing you guys say is that it sounds like they would still be counted for their attendance even if they were being sent home. I know our district is not doing a live option, so I'm wondering how well the instruction would be at home if they are missing school possibly multiple times. I know my son had to miss the science fair last year and middle school orientation, and he had been quarantined twice and sent home. Now going into middle school this year, he'll also be in band, and there's not really a way to practice with the band at home. So I would really like to see that no quarantines happen this year and that we just divorce the Department of Health away from the Education Department. Thank you.
Our next comment will come from Robert Barrer.
Thank you. This is Robert Barrer, and I think what should happen is we should all be consistent. If parents make a right to choose and have the right to choose whether their child is going to be educated in person or educated remotely because of the pandemic, the parent should have the choice. The child should not have to be quarantined in order to have that option because I believe we should be consistent with the parents having a right to choose if, in fact, there is no mask mandate. That's not the subject of today's comment, but we should be consistent throughout. If a parent wants his child to be educated... Thank you. This is Robert Barrer, and I think what should happen is we should all be consistent. If parents make a right to choose and have the right to choose whether their child is going to be educated in person or educated remotely because of the pandemic, the parent should have the choice. The child should not have to be quarantined in order to have that option because I believe we should be consistent with the parents having a right to choose if, in fact, there is no mask mandate. That's not the subject of today's comment, but we should be consistent throughout. If a parent wants his child to be educated at home because of their parents...
Thank you, Mr. Barrer, but we're going to continue with additional comments regarding this specific rule. Thank you.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, please state your name. Your line is live.
Hello, this is Joshua Jackson. I'm calling from Nassau County. I've started a group with over 500 parents, and we've been actively involved with this school year. Quarantining students that are not sick, that test positive for a coronavirus, is wrong, and it should not be allowed. Us parents in North Florida will not allow bureaucrats to screw up our children's education anymore. I don't care if you end this call, piss parents off, and now you're...
Excuse me, Mr. Jackson, but this rule is not directed towards quarantine. This is simply directed towards attendance records. Thank you.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is now live.
Hi, is it me? Hello?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm Sue Altansky. Yeah, hi, I'm Sue Altansky. I'm a school board member from Monroe County. And last year, we were able to educate the kids during quarantine with our innovative learning system, which was required in last year's executive order. But this year, those were canceled, and we were told that kids either had to learn through full virtual or in-person. So I'm wondering if this rule will alleviate that requirement and allow us to go back and do our innovative learning program, which was used to teach kids in quarantine. So I hope it does. Thank you very much.
We'll take our next commenter.
Hi, my name is Anthony DiMarco. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
My name is Anthony DiMarco. I'm calling from Tallahassee, Florida. I just want to state first, for the record, under the Florida statute 120.54, provides that emergency processes were there for students where there is an immediate danger of public health, safety, or welfare that requires emergency action. I think that this emergency rule is out of order. At the same time, I think that it will only increase learning loss by counting students who are not in class as present. Thank you. And I'd also like to request a public hearing on this rule.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, please state your name. Your line is live.
Hello, thank you, Lord, for taking my comment. I'm calling from Manatee County, and I really, I guess my comment is more of a question, but I would just ask the board to please consider with this rule about continued access to education. My understanding is that, at the current time, statutes in Florida require that a student must be on campus that first week of school and those first days of school, or they are withdrawn from their registered school. I'm wondering, for students who begin the start of the year with flu or cold symptoms or, you know, suspected exposure, even if it didn't happen on campus, is there some sort of provision to protect those students so they can do the right thing and stay home without fear that they would be withdrawn from their schools?
Caller, you have five seconds. We'll take our next commenter. Caller, your line is live.
Hello, this is Chris Nelson, calling from Fort Lauderdale. How are you guys today? Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. All right, so you're basing all of these rules that you're making on the fact that there is a public health emergency, and I challenge you right now to produce documentation that SARS-CoV-2 even exists, that it's been isolated, or what you're calling the Delta variant now even exists or has been isolated because we know neither of these things have been isolated. This is a documented fact. And if you go forward with the deep think, we watch and...
We'll take our next commenter. Caller, your line is live.
Hi, my name is Brenda Clark. I'm in Lee County, Florida. I think it's great that we can count the students that are quarantined as attendants so that their school year isn't suffering. I do have a concern about the 10-day quarantine for children if they're even exposed to somebody, not necessarily having symptoms that they're made to stay home. I don't think all school districts have set up for virtual if they are assumed to be quarantined. So I think that we need to make sure that all districts are doing this because I have not heard that we have that option in Lee County. Thank you.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Hi, my name is Catherine Norris. I live in Monroe County. I have two unvaccinated children. My question is that I would like to keep them home for the first two weeks of school, but the school is not offering virtual teaching because they are unvaccinated. I don't want them to have to switch schools, and I don't want them to be counted as absent for two weeks. But we do want to watch the virus for the first two weeks, so I wanted to make sure that Monroe County can have a virtual school option at the school. Thank you.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is now live.
Hello, this is Mario Salazar. I'm calling from Miami-Dade County. I'd like to echo the comments that have been made to enable or to have us the option for MSO or virtual, which I seem to think this order necessitates. So that's my comment. We need to have a virtual option. I don't see how you can do this without a virtual option. So we need to know how it's going to be enacted and how it's going to take place. Thank you.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is now live.
Christine Divageli from Lee County here. I would like, I also, I have a problem with the 10-day exposure quarantine. I think, I also am in Lee County, and we also do not have a virtual learning option available to our districts for the upcoming school year. So I would like to ask that if you guys are going to vote on this today, that adding a statewide virtual learning option be available to parents as well as, well, I don't really know how to word this one, but the 10-day exposure quarantine needs to be reevaluated, that's for sure. But other than that, I appreciate you guys and all you're doing today. Thank you very much.
We'll take our next questioner. Caller, your line is now live.
Hello, this is Kathy Florham from Manatee County. And first of all, thank you for thinking about our children and trying to make it possible for them to continue to learn. However, in our county, we don't have a virtual option available to us except for K-12, which there's a lot of hoops to jump through to get your kids in. My concern is that there are many children in our district, and actually, my grandchildren are some of them, who have pre-existing conditions like severe asthma, and they may need a virtual option. I wholeheartedly support quarantining. I wholeheartedly support social distancing, and I wholeheartedly support continuing their education when they happen to be quarantined. But if there was a virtual option available, that would allow parents to protect children, like my grandchildren, from people who don't believe that COVID exists. I can hardly believe there's people like that, but there are. And so thank you, Lord, for trying to do the best for our kids.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Burrows. I'm from Seminole County. I just want to comment on the need for a virtual option. The one thing that does concern me about this is that last year, we saw a lot of teachers struggle. They were stressed out, stretched very thin, and overworked having to do virtual classes as well as work in the classroom. Also, I want to address the quarantining guidelines for the 10 days for students that either have already had COVID in the past, natural antibodies, obviously, as well as that don't have any symptoms. I feel it's unhealthy for them to be absent for 10 days, regardless of whether they're able to learn from home. It still provides a lot of extra anxiety, depression, and loss of social interaction. So please consider all these as you make your decision and possibly make your changes.
Caller, you have five seconds. We'll take our next question. Caller, your line is live.
Hi, my name is Molly. I'm a registered nurse, bachelor's prepared of 20 years. I want to say, first of all, you do not quarantine ever, ever, unhealthy, okay? Quarantine is for the sick. So I'm with those parents that you need to relook at that. Secondly, social distancing, I urge you to look at the MIT study, which says it's a false, made-up construct. I want you to be aware that social distancing before 2018 never existed, okay? So let's stop following that construct. You do need to present an option for children because you have single parents. What are they going to lose their job if they have to stay home for 10 days? Our health department is abusing our children. The masks don't work. There's peer-reviewed, science-based data.
Okay, thank you, Molly. That doesn't really apply to the rule we're considering this morning.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
This is Matt from Duval County. You guys need to stop this communist takeover. You guys are ruining our children's lives. The Health Department has no right to control education.
Matt, this is not a meeting of the Health Department. Thank you very much.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Hello, my name is Esmeralda. I'm from Pasco County, and my comment is that we are in desperate need of a virtual option for our children. Regarding quarantine, I support it. However, I do feel that we need to have that virtual option. If the children are not in school, they need to be learning. Our grades will slip, and worst of all, our children and our family's health is at stake.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live. Hello, caller, please make sure your line is not muted.
Yes, I apologize. It was. This is Vera from Miami, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I agree with the parents for a virtual option until transmission rates are lower and just having it as another mitigation strategy, given the fact that Miami is a very international city. Everybody is coming back from vacation, traveling. I feel that we need to implement that to keep our families and also communities safe and not have an even higher transmission rate. So I sincerely ask that you offer that remote option for us, for us parents that feel it is best for us to stay at home. Even companies are pushing back right now to January or February to have even their employees that are vaccinated with everything going on. So thank you very much.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Hi, my name is Michael Cassauer. I'm from Broward County, Florida. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to express that, while no desire whatsoever to speak about any other bodies of the government, including the Department of Health and what they'll be doing, it does seem like, to some degree, the impact of the rule being considered today may be inextricably intertwined with the other rules that are being considered by the Department of Health, which, to the best of my knowledge, I've heard a citation before, have not been made available to the public yet. If I'm mistaken, I would welcome an opportunity to review that rule, but it does seem that these issues are related and inextricably intertwined. So I think it's challenging to consider what's being considered today without openly discussing what the Department of Health might be considering at the same time. Thank you so much.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Kevin Stillwagon, Osceola County. I just want to caution you on using or issuing a stay-at-home order for a child based upon a test that is not valid. Thank you.
Operator, let me just remind callers, this rule simply has to do with attendance records. In the event of a quarantine or other circumstances, it doesn't create the circumstances giving rise to a quarantine. And I also like to point out that all children in Florida do have a virtual option. If they want to send their student to a virtual school, they should reach out to their own district. That's not what this rule is about this morning. But they can reach out to their district. They can also access the Florida Virtual School and obtain a virtual education in that manner. So with that, if there are any callers who want to comment specifically on pupil attendance records in the remaining time, we would love to hear from you.
Thank you. And again, if you do not want to comment on the rule, then you may press star 2 to remove yourself. We'll take our next comment.
Yeah, this is John in Jacksonville. I just wanted to follow up on the previous comments that were made. If the kid is testing positive, they are sick. They are spreading the disease. The quarantine is to protect them.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Oh, hi, Shara Maso, Belushi County. So I heard you say that this modifies, I believe, 6A-1.004 of the Florida Administration Code. And I haven't been able to pull that up, but I'm wondering how we get to a space of allow students to continue their education under quarantine. So is the board involved in that process of how we get to quarantine? And if so, can we have a meeting about that part before we say yes to attendance? Because while you're saying there's access to Florida online, there are things like deadlines, and as somebody else stated, a lot of hoops to jump through. So it seems as though it's available to families, but it really doesn't work just like that. Thank you.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is now live. Hello, please make sure your line is not on mute.
Sorry, no comment on this rule.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
This is Vera from Miami again. I wanted to add one more thing on the comment that virtual is offered. That is correct, but with that said, for all the magnet students that are out there, we would forfeit our...
Excuse me, Vera, but we're going to limit comments to the attendance records rule, please. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Uh, yes, I commented on the ato, the attendance. Yeah, while they're going to be quarantined or possibly quarantined at home for the 10 days, it's a very disruptive policy to send a student home from school in the middle of learning and have them go virtual and come back in after the 10 days. This is the reason why my wife and I have just chose to pull our kids from the education and homeschool them for this very same reason that you guys are doing.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Hi, it's Michelle from Martin County. I'm just curious as to, I know in our district, vaccinated children were not going to be quarantined. Is that still going to be the case across the board?
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Hello, this is Adam Starway in Volusia County. I have two children in the public school system. My understanding is that, uh, for attendance, when kids are physically present in the school, that there is funding towards the state for students who are present. And so, then, if they're going to be counted as present while at home in quarantine, that there is still remaining funding for the state, which that seems untoward if they're not getting the same sort of education while sitting at home in quarantine. And, and I, my kids in our district do not have that virtual option any longer. So, it just seems as a benefit to the school and a detriment to the child and the family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Operator, have you been tracking the time? We do need to limit the call-ins to 15 minutes in light of the emergency nature of this meeting.
We can move along to the next agenda item, sir.
Great. Thank you very much, and, and thank you, all of those members of the public who called in. The rule itself appears not to have any questions directly pertaining to it, although there were a number of good issues raised in those questions. Members, if you have any questions at this point, uh, or if you would like to repeat any of the questions you heard from members of the public for consideration by the Board or for response by Mr. Mears, please do so at this time. Any questions?
No questions from me, Chair. Member Johnson.
Okay, um, with no questions from the Board then, we have a motion. We have a second, uh, in favor of approving emergency rule 6AER21-01 and notice.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? With that, the motion carries, and I'd like to move on to the second agenda item this morning, which is the approval of emergency rule 6AER21-02, the COVID-19 Hope Scholarship Transfer Procedures. And once again, I'd like to recognize Mr. Mears, who is General Counsel to the Department of Education, to provide an overview of this rule, please.
Thank you, Chair Grady. The second emergency rule for your consideration, as you pointed out, is, uh, 6AER21-02 COVID-19 Hope Scholarship Transfer Procedures. The Department's statutory authority for this rule is found in 1,002.40. This emergency rule supplements the Department's existing rule on Hope Scholarships, which is found at Rule 6A dash 6.0951 Florida Administrative Code. Uh, for the caller asking about how to find the administrative code, if you look up and Google Florida Administrative Code, you'll get the website that allows you to type in the specific rule, and it'll pull it up. All agency rules are there available. Um, I won't repeat them, but just note that this second rule is also in response to the Governor's Emergency Order, and it's where the Department of Education was directed to ensure that all action taken complies with the parent's Bill of Rights, to protect the rights of parents to make decisions, uh, the health and education decisions regarding their children, and also that the, any action taken would be done consistent with Florida constitutional freedoms, parental rights under Florida law, and the ability to protect children with disabilities and health conditions who could be harmed, uh, by certain protocols. The, as with, um, the prior emergency rule, this rule is consistent with the Governor's Executive Order. This rule specifically allows students who are subjected to COVID-19 harassment to transfer to a private school or another school in the district or another district altogether. This rule provides parents with an additional education and health option in cases when a student is sur, subjected to COVID-19-related harassment. The rule specifically defines that, uh, the COVID-19-related harassment to mean any threatening, discriminatory, insulting, or dehumanizing verbal, written, or physical conduct a student suffers in relation to or as a result of school district protocols for COVID-19, including face covering, the separation of students, and COVID-19 testing requirements. Now, that all applies where the conduct has the effect of substantially interfering with the student's educational performance, opportunities, or benefits. This rule applies whenever a student is harassed in connection with a school district's COVID-19 protocols. As with the prior emergency rule, um, then, the notice and the emergency rule sets out the reasons for the emergency, and so, if the State Board adopts this rule, you'll be adopting the explanation and justification for the emergency, which we've briefly summarized. Of course, that's with schools starting in a few days. There's not time for the regular rulemaking process, and it's urgent and critical that parents can direct the health and education decisions of their children. This provides an extra way that they can do that. If the State Board adopts this emergency rule, you will be adopting the text of the rule and also the entire notice, which contains the findings that are required by law for the adoption of an emergency rule. Uh, this concludes my presentation of, uh, this, uh, Rule 6AER dash 21 dash 02 COVID-19 Hope Scholarship Transfer Procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mears. Can I get a motion to approve the emergency rule 6AER21-02 and notice?
No.
Is there a second? With that, members, I would like to once again move forward first by taking questions from the public. After that, we'll have an opportunity to ask questions if we, as Board members, have any questions. And again, for those people calling in, we very much want to hear from you on this rule, which has to do with Hope Scholarships in connection with COVID-19 procedures. We all on this Board are volunteers. We share your passion for our kids. We share your passion and concerns about education in Florida. We think Florida has done a fabulous job of navigating through a very difficult time with this pandemic and post-pandemic activities, and we appreciate your interest in our service on this Board and our activities. But again, please limit your comments to this proposed rule having to do with the Hope Scholarship. With that, operator, let's open it up for calls limited to one minute with a total of 15 minutes, please.
We'll take our first comment. Caller, your line is live. Hello, please verify your line is not muted. We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Hi, Article, this is John in Jacksonville again. Article nine of the Florida State Constitution guarantees to parents, we talked about parents' rights. Article nine guarantees to parents a safe and secure public school. Now, this emergency has been declared because of COVID, but the proposed rule is to protect students from masks, which actually protects students from COVID. So, will you be providing scholarships for parents who want to send their school, children to safe schools that require masks?
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Hi, my name is Kirby Thomas, and I'm a parent in Leon County. Members of the Board, this rule is a moral outrage. Taking basic, proven healthcare precautions to protect our kids is not discriminatory bullying or harassment. Discrimination is when you hold one group of people to a different standard than another group, and bullying is when you are singling somebody out and harming them in some way. A universal mask mandate does neither of these things. It holds everyone to the same healthy standard. This is irresponsible and reckless language, and it's quite frankly reprehensible. State Mar, Board members, I urge you to look beyond the false platitudes of parental rights and personal freedoms that this rule espouses. It is, in fact, extremely one-sided. What about my constitutional parental right to a safe public education for my child? This bill defunds school districts that.
Caller, your five seconds.
And you're writing a blank check of taxpayer money to private schools.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
My name is Emily Talton. I'm in Pinellas County. Uh, I was also wondering, is this money and scholarship going to be available for my child in order for her to go to a safe school that is requiring masks?
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Thank you, Board, for taking my call. My name is Dawn, and I'm a parent in Manatee County. Um, I would, I would like to comment on, uh, parental choice. I have a, a high schooler. She's in the top 3% of her class. She consistently scores excellent marks on all of her FSA testing. She genuinely loves school. She's involved in extracurriculars. She wants a safe school. She wants to feel comfortable on campus. Her only option is to unwithdraw from her school and sign up in an eLearn option where she will not continue with her students or her extracurriculars. My question for the Board is, in considering this motion, is it justified and is it morally right to take public school funding and allocate it to private schools in place of allocating it to a full eLearn option that would provide my child a choice too, and she could stay home for a couple of weeks while we wait for cases to decline? Thank you.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Um, my comment is, uh, is driven towards, actually, and I appreciate that, that latitude is given to the prior lady to speak about the idea of it being tied to the, the mask order. I do appreciate that's not the debate right now, but I'm taking a look at the memo that was circulated in advance of today's meeting, and it does acknowledge that the, the, all of these factors are, in fact, as everyone is indicating, driven towards some of the consequences that would arise from the mask mandate. I appreciate that the Council, uh, uh, did disclose before that there is, that the Florida Register and Florida Administrative Code website should have this information, but I am still not seeing that. I'll, I would welcome a re, repeating of the citation. None of this has been publicly made available. I believe the citation provided was 65 DER21-12. I also checked for 64 DER21-12. It seems that this, this tribunal has had a chance to review a rule and consider it for the purposes of this vote today, but the general public is being limited in their ability to see that same rule. I think this should be made public before these things are considered.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Hi, I'm Michelle from Seminole County. I just want to address, um, this rule allowing the Hope Scholarship is pretty amazing. Um, I am hoping that you guys have also decided on protocols to prevent such harassment, um, as far as this behavior, and not just allowing parents to remove their kids, because sometimes that can be, um, an issue all on its own, uh, with kids that are succeeding in certain classes and have, uh, certain curriculum that is only offered in different schools within the district. Uh, so definitely, I hope you guys have addressed this with the schools, because this is something that we do worry about as parents with having our personal choice, whether it is to mask or not mask our students, is to hope that there is no harassment. Or discrimination, um, so definitely, you know, hopefully.
We'll take our next comment.
Operator, I do want to point out to folks, including one of the callers in particular, the rules are posted on the Florida Department of Education website. The Department of State will likely ultimately post them as well, but they are available. And again, please limit comments to the Hope Scholarship Transfer Procedures, and we're probably getting close to that 15-minute marker, operator. Thank you.
Yes, we'll take our next comment.
Good morning, Board members. My name is Tiffany Justice. I'm a parent of four children in attending public school, as well as the co-founder of Moms for Liberty. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of over 10,000 parents. While this rule gives parents another option, it still doesn't protect parents' rights to healthcare decisions within their own school. Many private schools are full, and parents do not have the option to move their child. So, we support a stronger rule that would allow parents to stay in the school and assert their statutory authority for making healthcare decisions for their minor child. The fundamental right to direct the upbringing of your child is not something that has been granted to us by the government, thus it cannot be taken away. Our parental rights do not stop at the classroom door. We want to partner with our children's schools, but we do not co-parent with the government. Thank you for your time.
And Chair Grady, I'm showing that we have currently about three more minutes left in the 15-minute period. We'll take our next comment.
Hello, my name is Hajar Sadevar. I'm a family physician and mother of two elementary students in public schools in Pinellas County. Um, while I, uh, think it is a good idea to allow children who have disabilities and health conditions to be able to choose, uh, safer options, I'm concerned about the use of the word harassment. Medical protocol is not harassment. Public health is not harassment, and what this will allow is to further defund our public education system.
We'll take our next comment. Caller, your line is live.
Hi, my name is Anthony DiMarco, calling from Leon County. I just want to say that this rule appears to be completely out of order. Every district, every school, and the state already has anti-bullying rules on, on file, uh, anti-harassment rules on file. There is no plausible reason to enact this rule. Uh, I'd like to echo previous callers that it can also further defund public schools. Uh, uh, again, I've only heard a matter of, uh, a case made for urgency, not emergency. A lack of planning on your part is not an emergency. Thank you.
We'll take our next comment.
Hello, uh, I'm a registered nurse. I just wanted to comment that none of us have the right to discriminate or segregate based on health status, okay? That includes whether or not we wear the mask. Let me remind you that the CDC recommendations for masks are based on a study that failed peer review, is unpublished.
Okay, just a reminder, this rule has nothing to do with a mask mandate, so let's move on to questions, if any.
Chair Grady, looks as if we've reached that 15-minute mark, sir. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much. Uh, members, we have heard from the public. Do you have any questions at this point regarding this proposed rule? Hearing no questions?
For, uh, it's not a question, it's just for clarity, because we did have comments between the, um, the motion and where we are now, and I appreciated the clarity on, that you offered at the front of this, on what we're actually voting on. If you could just restate that for me, that would be perfect.
Sure, uh, let's have Mr. Mears do that, so that we get it straight from the rule.
Uh, thank you, Chair Grady, and also just to respond to the comment, Hope Scholarships are funded by people when they purchase a motor, motor vehicle, they make a, they elect a donation to fund a Hope Scholarship, and so, it's not coming out of the SESP, it's not money that was appropriated to districts, it's a scholarship, uh, fund that, uh, is in place there. The rule that we're voting on here, uh, is, is very simple in what it does. There's already a Hope Scholarship. There's already a HOPE scholarship program in place. That program, since 2018, has allowed parents whose students are harassed to opt out. It gives them an option, they qualify for a HOPE scholarship. This could be on either side of whatever the mandate is. If a child, for whatever reason, is harassed by other students or anyone at the school in connection with their health protocols, this rule allows a parent to access a scholarship that they could use to go to a different public school, they could use to cross to a different district. If you happen to live near a line, you could go to another school district, or you could access a private school that accepts state scholarships, and they would be, the funding would follow, but it's not taking money from the district. This is people, when they buy a car, they can elect to donate some money to the HOPE scholarship, and those funds are then available to help parents get their child out of a situation that's 100% in keeping with the right of a parent to direct the education and health of their children. So that's what we're voting on. All this does is just define COVID-19 harassment. Harassment's already in the rules, it's already defined, but because this is a new issue, we wanted to provide clarity and show that it has to, there has to be a connect, it has to impact the education of the child. This rule, if adopted by the board, would be effective today.
Yeah, I think Ms. Johnson was asking what the specific motion was that we are now discussing. And the motion was to approve the emergency rule that Mr. Mears just described again, and for which we have heard public comment. It is the Rule 6A ER-21-02, having to do with HOPE scholarship transfer procedures. So, members, any questions or comments regarding that proposed rule?
No, Chair, thank you.
Chair Grady, I had more of a, I guess, a comment more than anything. This is Mr. Gibson.
Sure, please.
So I think, you know, there's been, there's obviously been a lot of reporting about what we're doing here today, and I think there's been a lot of confusion. And I think it bears sort of repeating, and I thought you did a very good job at the outset of the meeting, kind of explaining why we're here today and what we're doing. And really, the reason why we're here is because of the executive order the governor issued that directed not only the State Board of Education, but also Department of Health to work together to put forth these rules that really do one thing, which is prioritize parental choice. And as you, as our board members knows, parental choice, when it comes to education, is something that we've fought for, I've fought for, we've all fought for on this board, from a policy standpoint for a long time. We have, it's important, I think, to understand, and especially important for the public to understand, that we, the State Board of Education, we have specific jurisdiction, we have specific tools within our toolbox. And this is really, as the governor's order laid out, this is an education issue, but it's also a health issue. And I think that's why we have done really exactly what the governor's order has laid out, and I applaud staff for all the time that they have spent working on this, is we've worked with health. They passed a rule, or they have a rule that was released this morning, dealing with health, dealing with the masking requirement. And now we're passing a rule here relating to education and the HOPE scholarship. But the two rules, they do work together, I think. And we know, obviously, with the HOPE scholarship, I think everyone on this board has supported the HOPE scholarship. It's a great program. It again prioritizes parents' choice, you know, if their child is experiencing or being subjected to some harassment or some other intimidating event at school. The HOPE scholarship is a great tool. The parents can choose to select a different educational environment for their child, and that's a decision that the parents make based on the needs of their individual child. And I think here with COVID-19, and we've got school districts all across the state who are adopting various protocols, this is a changing situation, it's a fluid situation. And as they adopt these COVID-19 protocols, I think it's important that if a student, if a parent believes that their student is subject to some sort of harassment, and likely that's going to be based on a parent making a health or education decision for their child, this again gives parents that ability to move their child to another school and take advantage of it. I think it's, you know, I've seen reports that the rule, we don't have the authority to do this. I think the rule is narrowly tailored. It aligns with the statute creating the HOPE scholarship, and the State Board has absolute authority to define harassment further, which we've done. But I think from the standpoint, this rule, and although I appreciate that we are dealing with the educational component, this rule has to be read in conjunction with the Department of Health rule that was released this morning, and I encourage, obviously, members of the public and school districts and parents to read that rule. Rule 64 DER 21-12, Protocols for Controlling COVID-19 in School Settings. That rule as well was, you know, I think is narrowly tailored, and they did a good job of really respecting the educational, learning, and health choices that parents make for the well-being of their child and for students. But in that rule, it does mandate that if a school district is going to have a mask requirement, they have to allow for parents to opt out their student from that requirement. Again, it's prioritizing parental choice. If you're going to have a mask requirement, then parents have to have the ability to opt out. And it also does something which I think is, which ties into our rule today, it defines nondiscrimination in that rule. And it says that students whose parents have opted them out of a mask or face covering requirement shall not be subject to any harassment or discriminatory treatment, including but not limited to relegation to certain physical locations, isolation during school activities, or exclusion from any school-sponsored events or activities. So in other words, if, and again, this is, I guess, would be discrimination based on the school district and their policies, but if a student or a parent feels that their child's being discriminated, now they have, based on our rule, the opportunity to use the HOPE scholarship. But again, I will say, because I know a lot of school districts are listening today, and I know that school districts are in the process of creating their own policies as it relates to masking and dealing with COVID-19, and it's a challenging, it's a challenging situation to come up with these policies. I understand there's strong feelings on both sides. But with the Department of Health rule, and now this rule in place, if, as we vote on this, that is, both of those, once passed, they have the force of law. And Chair, one thing that we have done, this board has done that I'm proud of, is that we have focused on school districts, and if we see a school district who is either unwilling or unable to comply with the law, then we, the State Board, we have certain authority of either withholding the transfer of state funds or other sort of tools in our toolbox to ensure that school districts are following the law. And I think that, you know, obviously, anything that we do, we would want to be narrowly tailored. We're not going to hurt kids. We're not going to pool funding that's going to hurt kids in any way. But now, this Department of Health law is in place, it has nondiscriminatory standards. The HOPE scholarship, once we pass this, that'll be in place. And we need to ensure that school districts are aware of that, that their policies conform with it, and we need to watch these policies that are being adopted by the school districts to ensure that they comply with these new rules, which are, have the force of law, and do the thing that we, that this rule does and that we, as a board, have fought for, which is they ensure and protect parental choice. If a parent wants their child to wear a mask at school, they should have that right. If a parent doesn't want their child to wear a mask at school, they should have that right. Again, it's about protecting parental choice, and I think that's distinction between our rule that we're passing here today and the Department of Health's rule, and seeing how those two rules work together in line with the governor's executive order and his leadership on this issue, I think it's important, Chair, for the public to understand that as we move forward. So I appreciate your indulgence. I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gibson. And that actually ties into a number of the emails that I received, and you may have as well, regarding the agenda today. And one of the themes repeated is the desire for local control. And you can't have more local control than controlled by a parent. So thanks for bringing that to our attention. Again, we have focused on parental choice with this board, and we'll continue to focus on parental choice as we move forward. Members, any other comments or any other questions regarding the proposed rule having to do with the HOPE scholarship transfer procedures? Very well, we have a motion that's been seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries, and with that, that concludes the meeting today. I do want to thank all of those who participated by phone and otherwise today in this emergency meeting, and assure everyone that we have a single filter at this board that we use, and that is what's best for the kids. At some, at times, it may appear to be in conflict with what's best for other groups, but we focus on what's best for the kids and for the students and the system for which we are responsible. And with that, operator, that concludes the meeting, and we can terminate the call. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes today's call. Thank you for your participation. You may now disconnect.
Florida's Department of Education was created in 1885, first given the constitutional name, the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction. With headquarters in Tallahassee at the Turlington Building, the Department of Education is responsible for administering rules, guidelines, and instruction over-